I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the time and the place for the January 16th Regular Board Meeting of the Marshalltown Community School District. Welcome to all of you who are with us this evening, and welcome to our audience on delayed broadcast as well. Allow me to introduce the people at the table with me. From my right, we have Shawn Peitman, Karina Hernandez, Ross Harris. On my left, we have Mike Miller, Ben Fletcher, and Janelle Carter. To my left is Dr. Theron Schutte, the Superintendent of Schools, and I'm Bea Niblock. We do have a white sheet on the speaker table for anyone who is here that would like to speak to any agenda item or during the public comment time. If you sign up, just be sure and put your name and address so that we have that for our records. You'll be given five minutes to speak according to board policy, and according to the same board policy, we are not allowed to reply to your remarks, but we thank you for your comments anyway. Read with me the mission of the Marshalltown Community School District. It's in either place. "We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences." Stand as you're able and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a great public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Do we have any additions or changes to the agenda?
Well, we have a special recognition today. Do I have the certificate?
Can we approve? We're not quite there yet.
Oh, okay.
My question. Do we have any changes in the agenda?
We do not.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? You're so excited about this, Kathy. What can I say?
Second.
We forget everything else. So we had a Miller-Fletcher. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Seven-zero.
Now! We have a special recognition.
We're gonna show the video first.
Okay.
Get yourself a bottle of water.
We're excited to have Kathy Hale here, Marshawn High School English teacher who won the Golden Apple Award. Prior to winter break, we had WHO TV come to a special assembly, and it was a lot of fun, and she's gotten a lot of great feedback from former students that have -- she's impacted a lot of people, and so this is a well-deserved award, and we're excited. We're gonna show the video and then have her talk for a few minutes, and the word's right here.
Get your Chromebooks out, because I'm gonna be coming around. I'd like to see what in the world you're going to be persuasive about.
In the classroom, Kathleen Hale means business, but she also doesn't take herself too seriously.
She's one of the nicest ladies I've ever met, and she doesn't act her age.
This is proof. Hale's knows the entire Marshalltown High School fight song by heart and isn't afraid to show it off. She bleeds Bobcat blue and red. Her students are her life.
I believe anybody can be educated, and it's just up to me to find the key to unlock that window or that door into their desire to learn, because I think that's behind it all.
And the students consider her a part of their life, too.
You have a great bond with her, and she knows a lot about you, and you know a lot about her.
The Bohan Brothers don't even have Ms. Hale as a teacher anymore. It doesn't matter, though. They make it a point to still see her every day.
We come in every day and talk to her.
Yep. Before we leave, and we say hi to her and ask how her day is going.
The student who nominated the teacher for the award is now in college, a testament to Hale's past and present impact on her students.
So on behalf of IMD Insurance and our local independent insurance agencies in Channel 13, we'd like to present the Golden Apple Award to Ms. Kathy Hale.
Oh, my God. I am so grateful. I think that I have been blessed with amazing students who are unique and wonderful in themselves.
Recognition Hale says validates her nearly 20-year teaching career.
You just don't have enough if you got to keep. And so when something like today happens in that assembly, you get an idea, maybe you reached a few, you know? And so that's why my heart is overflowing.
In Marshalltown, Jody Whitworth, Channel 13 News.
Send the boy in there.
I'm not sure. I think everything I needed to say was right there. I have to tell you, I still have a photon cloud nine. Since we're going through semester tests right now, it's real important that I keep one foot on the ground in order for my students to understand and use my example to take this seriously. I am so grateful for this award. I surely, clearly, was very surprised, but it does say a lot about the young woman who nominated me, and she is a wonderful person, and I'm so excited that she's going into teaching. And since I'll be retiring soon, I'm looking forward to perhaps subbing now and then and getting to spend some time with my family and my pets. That's about all I have to say.
As educators, most of us know that we often don't hear about, you know, the difference that we make in kids' lives. We sometimes just hear some of the concerns or problems, and so it was so neat for one of our students to go out of their way to make an application for this award, which, you know, comes out of Des Moines or Central Iowa for the most part, and as you could see from the video, it was a wonderful, wonderful presentation within the whole high school community. And I've never seen with a high school student body so much excitement when your name was called, which was just affirmation of the great work that you've been doing. So we're very proud and happy to recognize you and wish you the best for the bigger of your careers.
On a personal note, Kathy's brother Kirk and I graduated together and we're very close friends yet today, and I've never had so much fun making contact with family members, and it's probably never been more challenging to expect them to not tell you about this.
Oh, my gosh. I had no idea that they could keep such good secrets. That's not normal. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kathy.
I'm so pleased with this recognition.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Looking at the minutes, are there any questions or concerns, corrections for the minutes of December 18? Moving on to personnel, any items of note, Mr. Spargatas?
Four retirees. You are on there. People on this list in the audience, though.
All right. I have four. Our first one is Pamela Ledford, who has worked for the district in food service for 15 years. She has worked at two of our schools, at Lenahan as a cook and in her most current role, and the high school in the salad department. Susan Pulpeter, a teacher, has been with the district for 18 and a half years. Before becoming a full-time employee, Susan was a substitute teacher for the district. She started as a tutor for kindergarten and first-grade students at Hoagland before taking a position at Fisher, and while she's been at Fisher, she's taught grades two, three, and most recently Title I. Linda Brittonall has 37 years of service to the district. Linda did her student teaching at Fisher before becoming a full-time teacher with the district at Lenahan when it was a junior high school. Linda has taught at Fisher's and Rogers in Special Ed and is retiring as a third-grade teacher at Rogers. And last but not least, Kathy Hale.
Is she still here?
No. She is still here, okay. All right. If I say something incorrect, just let me know. 18 years of service to our district, she is a Marshalltown High School and Marshalltown Community College graduate. She did her student teaching in Marshalltown and was a sub-teacher for the district prior to becoming a full-time teacher at the high school. She is really all Marshalltown. Kathy has taught various classes in English and Literature and also some film courses during her 18 years here, and in addition to teaching, she served as head cheerleading sponsor many years ago, and as you just saw, in December, she was given the Golden Apple Award by WHO Channel 13 for the impact she has had on her students. Four retirees on the agenda tonight have a combined 88 and a half years of service to our district.
Thank you very much. You've come full circle, Kathy. You started as a sub, and you're going back to a sub.
And I graduated from MHS, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have two agreements and contras. A few open enrollments in and out. A list of early graduates. Donations from JBS and the United Food and Commercial Workers Local 1149 in the amount of $1,000 each to our six elementary schools. Any items of note in the bills?
Nothing of note.
Any questions, people? Any questions on the financial report? May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Some second.
It was Ross.
It was Ross. Okay. Harris Carter. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries seven-zero. Thank you. Nobody on the list, Shawn?
Nope.
When you're speaking, please use one of the microphones.
Good evening. I am DeBert. I am the non-core CPDL, and with me tonight I have Lydia Arivolo, who's a counselor at the high school. I have Rachel Mackley, who is the counselor at Miller, and I have Terry Hungerford, who is representing the Iowa as the intermediate network specialist. And we tonight have with us our ICAP plan, and I think that was attached to the board minutes for you to review, but we're going to do a short recap of it. The counselors, and especially Lydia, have put a lot of hours and work into this plan to make it meaningful for our students here at Marshalltown High. So Lydia's going to begin with this.
Okay. So just to begin, I'd like to give a little bit of history to career development in the Marshalltown schools. For 10-plus years, the state mandated that students had to go through the I Have a Plan Iowa Career Development kind of software tool, and that's where they would receive most of their career development. And in smaller districts, that plan worked successfully because you had less students to get through that planning tool. But in Marshalltown, it wasn't meeting the needs that our students have for career development. It was very difficult to get 1,500 students to checkmark through the boxes on this website in a meaningful manner. So then it was almost like a blessing then for the state to stop funding that program and let the districts take control and build our own career development program that would be meaningful for the students in the Marshalltown School District. So then the state said that we had to have a team, and so there's been principals and teachers and counselors and central office staff on this team to develop the plan. And so we went through and looked at all of the different activities that we had been doing, and then we added on to them to build the career development plan that you've seen. And this plan, the state only requires you to have the activities for grades eight through 12, but as a district, we decided that we would like to encompass a full scope of activities, and so included in the plan is activities from pre-K through 12th grade. So the first, the district plan has five essential components, and the first essential component is self-understanding. And so students shall engage in developmentally appropriate inventories and assessments that promote self-understanding, the connection to work, and engage in meaningful reflective activities about the results. And so Marshalltown chose to utilize Virtual Job Shadow as our software tool to help students in their self-understanding. So through this website, the students go on and they take different career assessments, such as Interest Inventory and Career Cluster, and then based on the results that they receive, they are able to go through and research different careers. And so I have a short video that we're gonna play just to give you a little example of videos that students can watch to learn more about careers.
How's brushing been going at home? How often are you brushing your teeth?
Hmm, two times a day.
Nice. Being a dental hygienist is very rewarding. You feel like you get to contribute to somebody's life positively. My name is Yitira Martinez, and I am a registered dental hygienist with Virginia Garcia Memorial Health Center in Oregon. We are patient educators. We teach patients about oral health care, and we also provide dental cleanings, varnishes, sealants, and clinical settings. Reacclusal. The hygienist will take all of the baseline information as far as periodontal health and do the education portion of it in the cleaning, and then the dentist will do the actual exam and diagnosis. Part of my job is updating the patient's career chart. In Oregon, we have your traditional hygienist that works in the office with a dentist. We have what's called an expanded practice dental hygienist, which can work independently from a dentist, and we also have restorative hygienists that work in conjunction with a dentist to do fillings. My job here at Virginia Garcia allows me to do all of that, so I really never get bored, and I get to do everything that my license allows me to do. I'm also administrative capacity, so one day a week might be just the administrative portion of dental hygiene programs that we have here.
Okay, so as you could see in that video, the Virtual Job Shadow site gives students like a real-life look at what potential careers would be. In that video, dental hygienist, that's actually a job that comes up quite often as kids want to do. So we have so far been really happy with the Virtual Job Shadow website. It's also a tool that students, they can log into that site 24/7 and get in there. They can log in, show their parents what they're working on, and then also they'll have their account throughout their high school years and potentially into their first couple of years of college so that they can go back and utilize the different tools in there to help them in their career planning. And then the counseling department uses the results of their different inventories in there. We can get in there and pull different reports, and then that helps us to better plan activities for students, other activities that we'll go through in the presentation. And also, we're, the counselors, we're building lesson plans, and so the students are receiving or working through Virtual Job Shadow in their homerooms. We have bi-weekly homerooms just on career development, and so on a regular basis, students are assessing the site and going in and working through their career development. The second essential component is career information, and so their career information research is again being utilized through that Virtual Job Shadow website and then also through the lessons that we're doing in their career development homerooms. And then a main piece, at least in the high school level, is as students are in researching the different careers, where counselors are meeting with the students to then review the courses that they're taking in high school to make sure that they're aligning with the different careers and post-secondary goals that they have in mind after high school. The third essential component is career exploration activities, and I'm gonna let the other members here share a little bit more about that.
Yes. This year, we are experimenting or piloting a junior achievement program and the K through sixth grade. What we're starting with is at Rogers and Hoagland, we're piloting a K through four program with volunteers from our community to help with this. Right now, we have 25 classrooms, we have 25 volunteers. The volunteers will spend, have five visits, and they'll spend 30 to 45 minutes in the classroom with a curriculum that Junior Achievement has already designed for us to utilize. Those volunteers are gonna be trained in January 26 to go and do that first piloting program, and I know Dr. Schutte's been working really hard in helping come up with the volunteers, and we're really excited because we have 38 volunteers from our community who are committed to helping with that program. When they get to be in fifth grade, there is a thing called BizTown, and this is something we're going to be trying next year at Lenahan, and maybe I said that wrong. Fifth grade, sixth grade. It's sixth grade. And this is an opportunity for its in-class learning along with a day-long visit to a simulated, fully interactive town where JA BizTown citizens make the connection between what they learn in school and the real world. So we think this will be a very valuable piece for our students at the Lenahan, and this is one way of trying to introduce careers to our students at all grade levels, and with the hopes that we can expand this at all schools eventually, at all elementaries.
All right. And then kind of jumping over from Lenahan, once they get over to Miller, we kind of start seventh grade. This year, we started using the My Academic Plan, or we call it MAPS. It's through ISU. It's similar to Virtual Job Shadow without being the exact same thing, so we were kind of worried that if we did Virtual Job Shadow two years in a row at the middle school level, there wasn't a whole lot of change between the two, so we didn't want them to kind of get burned out or felt like, oh, I've already done this, I'm not gonna do it again. So we looked into the MAPS through ISU. It's a really great program that also ties in with MHS, and they have, part of their program actually looks at courses. So it's kind of nice because then in the eighth grade, we really set up their four-year plans. We begin their four-year plans, and then we look at their career goals. So it's kind of nice because they kind of just get their feet wet in seventh grade, and it's really exciting to see how excited they get and how grown up they feel, starting to already plan for high school. So that's kind of what we do in seventh grade, eighth grade, then again, we do their four-year plans. They go on a college visit. Two years ago, they were able to, with the Gear Up funds, we were able to go to DMAC in Ankeny and to MCC. So that was really great because they got two different college visits on two different campuses. So that was kind of neat, and that was for all students. So all students in the eighth grade went. Now we do MCC, and then Trio will take students to, seventh grade students usually go to, last year, I think they went to Simpson or Central, and then eighth grade, they usually go to Iowa State. So that's kind of one. And then we try to do a career fair every year. Last year, it was kind of a little bit smaller just because, again, the year before, when we had the Gear Up funds, it was, we were able to really kind of dive into it deep, and so last year, having to scale back a little bit, but we did a career fair with, like volunteers from the community come in. Students kind of just get to take a lot of what they're learning and then do a hands-on, which also related really well into our PBL classes, so where they were doing a lot of things that they were learning from their different careers. Then they were able to take that, and one group made rockets. A couple, I know one group that I had, we actually worked on resumes, so just did a whole variety of things, and so that was super beneficial for students as well.
So with the ninth grade, Lydia and I are members of the Marshalltown Business and Education Alliance Student Partnership Program. So we are at the high school, offering these type of learning events regarding careers or future for Marshalltown High School students. So ninth grade, we are planning a financial literacy fair, and again, with Virtual Job Shadow, they researched what they are considering to do as far as a career. They also will calculate their monthly income, and then come to the fair and purchase their house, their car, and that way they can see how far $2,000 can really go when you're trying to pay for life in general. So that is an opportunity not only to understand more about their career, but also get a sense of this is what I possibly might make per month and what they have to live on. Then, leading to 10th grade, we have set up a sophomore business tour week where we take that information, again, from Virtual Job Shadow. We divide the students up by career clusters. We reach out to area businesses to find out who can host a number of students. Usually, in a tour, we try to take between 20 and 30 students. And so during that one week in October, we are sending students out to our area businesses. It's a great way for students to be introduced to our local businesses, but also get a chance to hear and see some different careers that they never thought about inside of those businesses. Leading then into 11th grade, we have a career expo held out at MCC in the spring, and that is invited for the juniors to come out and, again, get a chance to choose, I believe it's three different people that they want or different careers that they're interested in. Get a chance to listen to what careers are available in that area. Again, area businesses are invited to come out and speak to these students, allowing students to come away with a better idea. Maybe it's the skills they need, maybe it's an education that they will need to pursue that certain career. And then finally, in 12th grade, we want to offer more job shadows. This is a one-time job shadow where they come in between two and four hours into a business to really test-drive the career and get a chance to meet with business people to see if that is the right fit for them. Job shadows have been very receptive, businesses have been receptive to have students come in, and we have great partnerships with our local businesses. And again, it's a chance for a student to really see the career, ask those tough questions of the business people, but also it comes out as a success, no matter if they decide, yes, that is exactly what they want to do, or maybe they didn't realize what a day in a life is like for an accountant, and that's not really what they want to do. So it's a success all the way around. But again, everything that is leading up, you know, like Lydia said, that Virtual Job Shadow, they're out there researching, they're outside doing that work, and that allows us to provide some of these activities through what they put in their Virtual Job Shadow.
The fourth essential component is post-secondary exploration, and we would like the students shall engage in activity. shall engage in activities to explore relevant post-secondary education and training options related to career interests, and engage in meaningful reflection on the exploration experience. Once again, we're starting this at the fifth grade level where they have college visits, and this time, they've gone to Iowa State and to UNI to have visits. Sometimes it's to maybe hear the symphony, or listen, or go to a play or a production, but while they're there, they're also getting a tour on campus, and they are talking with the students about what it takes to be success, what it takes to be successful at post-secondary education, and start to thinking about that already in fifth grade.
So again, then eighth graders, the entire eighth grade goes to MCC, and then throughout there, smaller groups will go to different colleges from there, just depending on what they're involved in or what they're interested in. We also then just kind of again utilize the virtual job shadow and continue to kind of do more of their post-secondary exploration from there.
So when the students are out at MCC for that financial literacy fair, it's, it would be probably impossible to run 370 students all at once through the activity that they have, and so we'll be breaking the students up into different groups. And so while some students are doing the financial literacy activity, the other groups will be running through and having a campus visit at MCC to learn about the different programs that are offered there. They'll get to see the dorms and what that looks like on the inside, and hear about tuition, you know, how much it would cost to go there. The current 10th graders, they're kind of in a, they're a special cohort. They are a Gear Up cohort, that class of 2020, and so there's, because they have that funding, it's a federal program, and so there's extra funding to do more activities. As Rachel had said, that, that group of students has already been on different college campuses. With the funding, they're gonna get a lot of visits to many different colleges. This year in 10th grade, we're taking all of them to a community college within the state of Iowa. So we're gonna be going back into virtual job shadow, looking at the results of their interest inventory, and then we've looked at the different community colleges to see what are some of their highlighted or special programs they offer, and we're gonna be matching students up, and so then they'll all go on a trip to a community college. That group of students, so sophomores, in 11th grade, they will all step foot on a campus of a private college within the state of Iowa. We're also hoping that we'll be able to do kind of a special visit, like on a Saturday, so their parents can come along and go with them on a visit too. All of our current, and then the activities for them will continue on, and they'll, they'll be able to do some other, other visits in 12th grade. But all of our 11th graders attended this year in the fall, they attended the MCC College Fair where there was representatives from 70 different colleges within the state and the surrounding colleges. And then every year, our seniors, we take them, each senior can sign up for two visits where we take buses to the three regent schools and to a private college. So throughout a student's career in Marshalltown, they are going to set foot on many different college campuses to start making that connection of what their interests are and how they're going to, what post-secondary route that they're gonna take. The last essential component is number five, career and post-secondary decision. Students shall complete relevant activities to meet their post-secondary goals consistent with their individual career and academic plan and their stated post-secondary intention.
So we start in the seventh and eighth grade by going through and doing their interest surveys, so they start to look at, what am I interested in, and how is that going to relate to my, what I, my career goal in the future? So basically, they kind of, it's kind of like a get-to-know-you type thing. So that's kind of where we start, is what are you interested in? Do you like working with people? Do you not like working with people? Are you hands-on? That sort of thing. So they kind of do a lot of self-exploration in seventh and eighth grade through maps and virtual job shadow. And then they set, once they've kind of come up with some sort of career goal, and we've just been working on their four-year plans, I've been in the classroom, it feels like, for five years, but for the past week and a half, working on their four-year plans. So they take their career goal, and then they begin to look at, okay, what are my, what classes am I going to take in high school to match up with that? So you know, the, a lot of them, kind of like Lydia was saying, a lot of them are interested too in the health field. So the PLTW biomed classes are pretty popular, especially for the eighth graders, they're really interested in those. So we kind of, I mean, we focus a lot on ninth grade because that's where they're going right next, but they really like diving in and seeing all that MHS has to offer over four years. Then they create their plan, which is kind of like their ICAP, and then they take it home, approve it with a parent or guardian, get it back to us, and then we kind of file that away from them, and then we send it over with them to the high school.
And right now, when the high school receives the paper version of their four-year plan, every year during course registration, which will be coming up for this next year in February, counselors, we review with them their, what their career intentions are. Students have a chance to look at their four-year plan that they created in eighth grade. Many, for many students, that changes as they continue on through, but it's a, it's a great tool that we utilize with them all the way through. We're hoping, I know that Dee and I have talked, we're hoping to talk with Dave Sandfield to see if there is an actual way where we can get their four-year plan linked into Infinite Campus, and so then we can have their classes that they're registering for linked up with their career goal, just to help keep everything in line. So as they continue to plow through high school and getting to their senior year, their counselor, their senior counselor will be meeting with them on a more regular basis throughout that year, just to help them as they continue through to apply for college, filling out their FAFSA. And we work with the Iowa College Aid, and they have what's called the three-step process. And so in the fall, we had a special college application day where students could come in to the auditorium, and we had different representatives from colleges come in and assist students with completing their college application. And then for filling out the FAFSA, that'd be step two. And so MCC has different nights throughout this, kind of throughout this timeframe, early fall and winter, where students can come in with their parents and have all their materials, and representatives will help assist their parents in filling out the FAFSA to remove that barrier, for some, that's a barrier. And then also, in the spring, we always have College Decision Day, and so the kids come into the library, and we post on a PowerPoint, kind of in the background, where they're going to school. And then we take their picture, and the kids get to fill out a thing that says, you know, I've decided to go to college, and we kind of make it a big thing and post that in the schools. And so we're just actively working to build a college-going culture among our students and get everyone excited to go on and to do some sort of post-secondary. So.
That's our presentation.
Any questions?
So Rachel, I, my son just went through this process, and he came home and he told us all about the classes he'd signed up for in ninth grade, and just as you said, he was very animated and excited about it, and felt like, you know, he was an adult or whatever. And so that was really cool. And Jennifer and I sat back and were like, whoa. We didn't, I felt like the disconnect was, we didn't have much involvement. Like, I didn't know what this assessment of his career interests were, or the classes that he wanted to take, and I don't know if that's because Owen didn't bring some paper home that he was supposed to, which is entirely possible, or that, that the parents just weren't that involved. And maybe that's by design. Could you speak to that at all?
Yeah. So basically, we just kind of work on the virtual job shadow, usually in October or so, and that's kind of just a little bit of self-reflecting, and we do kind of every day, you know, encouraging them, hey, go home, talk to your parents or guardians, or an older brother or sister or somebody there, to open up that dialogue. Obviously, then, that's, I guess, that's something to definitely consider, is, you know, having that involvement from step one. I guess we kind of look at it as more of a self-reflecting on the students, necessarily, like, what am I interested in? There's a short video that I like to use with them that talks about, you know, throughout your life, everyone's gonna kind of think that, oh, this is what's right for you, or this is, maybe you should do this. And as this starts, I started a lot of emails from parents and older siblings, like, hey, you know, I really think that they should do this, and, which is totally great, but sometimes it does come from the kid, you know, what do I want to do? What am I interested in? So we kind of just keep it as a self-reflective, but I really like that idea of letting parents know ahead of time, because sometimes it is just being able to have those dialogues and conversations, saying, hey, what are you interested in? Let's plan from there. And then once they kind of do the four-year plan, hopefully, yes, good, he's been at home talking about it, he has been super excited, and he's been working really hard on it, then we send them all home with everybody, hoping that they'll have that dialogue. Like every, we'll send, we'll print out a copy of every single one, and they'll take them home and hopefully have that dialogue with their parents before they return it to us. We also hope then that that opens up the door for eighth grade parent night, which is in, at the end of February, because then a lot of students go with their parents, or I guess eighth grade. Yeah. And then they'll go and kind of look at classes and see like, okay, oh, I didn't know this is what the PLTW engineering class was, this is really exciting, I want to do this. So I guess you're right, like, I guess we haven't really thought too much before this of the parent involvement, but I like that.
Your idea, Lydia, of somehow linking it to Infinite Campus, I think it'd be a super good idea, and, and generate more parent engagement, you know, if you're like me, it's in your face a lot, and so that'd be a good thing.
Or maybe it'd be possible to just make sure parents get the link to the virtual, you know, reality place, so that they could sit down with their student together and go through that.
Yeah. Because I guess we kind of look at it at the end, you know, of getting parents involved and making sure that it's, you know, that they've gone over, they've talked about it, but I think you're right, starting maybe from the beginning is, is a good approach. Thank you.
Do you do the same thing with Gear Up? Put that information on Infinite Campus?
Gear Up has a, we, there's a link from the main website to Gear Up with some more information for parents. But we, with Gear Up, we've already had this year three parent nights that's open up for parents to come. Our attendance hasn't been that awesome yet, but we're continuing to plan. We have, from our last parent night, we had a parent step up and say, hey, how would it, how would you like if I, she wanted to coordinate kind of a parent advisory committee for Gear Up, and so I think that will help get more parents to attend. This year, just for sophomores, because of Gear Up and funding and everything, to get more parents connected to registration, we're gonna have, sophomore parents are gonna be able to call and make appointments during the last week of January to meet with me and our Gear Up coordinator and/or Mr. Toronos to schedule meetings, and we're gonna have it throughout one full school day, and then into the evening where parents can come in and talk to us, and we can help plan if they have questions about their student schedule and the courses that they want to take next year.
It's a little bit like Mike. I was one of the Gear Up parents. I have a senior in college this year, so he's finishing his fourth year with Gear Up. And he went all the way from middle school to high school telling us about this program, and we totally said, don't now, they're not gonna give you any money, and, you know, I just really didn't believe him. So, and it did turn out to be a really great thing. So the more information that you can get.
The more information, the better. And one of the things that, because I'm the counselor for these kids, I was super excited when we hired Connie Gardelin. She is our Gear Up coordinator, so we have a, another person who's helping us get all these activities and coordinate with parents.
And then that jump from when you go to high school into college and managing it, because then they need to manage it all through college with the scholarship that they get, and figuring all that was, but it was the first year it had ever been done, so we were all rookies, I guess.
Right.
Sounds like it's come a long ways. It's a great program, it really is.
I want to commend the committee or the group on all the hard work put in to put this plan together, contrary to what you said earlier, Lydia. I would question even in smaller districts, the meaningfulness of the implementation after the initial year or so of the former plan, and so I think the time is right with, especially the big emphasis the high school's placing into work-based learning experiences and providing kids more meaningful exposure to businesses and jobs and potential career pathways and stuff. I think this'll have a lot of potential throughout the district, and I look forward to seeing it evolve over time.
Yeah. It's really exciting. I was really fun reading through the plan this week when we prepped for board docs. And I actually said to somebody today, our district has a K from pre-K on college.
Right. It's actually rare, so it is, it's awesome.
And we will continue to look at the plan to make sure that we keep it updated.
Yeah, it'll be updated annually to make sure that.
Do you guys, do you have plans for like technical, like, jobs, not just maybe college, but other careers too?
Yeah. Well, like, students interested in cosmetology, for instance, will either be visiting Iowa School Beauty in Town, or most likely, I think we're gonna go to Ames and do the PCI there. We're, we'll visit, on the community college visits, we're gonna take kids to Job Corps in Atumla, and I can't think of.
Well, and also, with my program with the intermediary, I try to target certain pockets of careers that are, seem to be the most popular, so that we have an agriculture day up at Ellsworth Community College, an intro to healthcare day that we have with, partner with Unity Point and McFarlane Clinic, and then we also have an advanced manufacturing day in the fall, and try to do it the week during advanced manufacturing week. Again, it's that call to those maybe just type of careers that are a certification or a two-year route, and that way, students are being exposed not only to, okay, you can go to these smaller community colleges for, you know, just a certification and go right into the workforce, but we do try to put all those puzzle pieces together of education and work, and how it all fits together for the student.
We are also in the process of having a dashboard created so that we can have some data at the end of the semester here, and then also, you know, ongoing to help us see what, what our needs are, what our students' needs are, and how their college and career readiness skills are.
Yeah. Great. Nice. Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mrs. Wyatt?
Okay. Today, I was wondering if we would ever end the first semester with all the delays and late starts, but we did end and will start tomorrow. So it is definitely that time of year where we begin planning for next year and present students with our course registrations. We actually have class meetings scheduled for the last week in January, where, and then the first week in February, students will have an opportunity to view some videos about courses at MHS, and, and go online and look at this wonderful 78-page document. Andrew's been very gracious and gets this up for parents to see as well, so that eighth grade parents can look through it, at the same time that all of our ninth and to 11th grade students are getting ready for that registration. So some of the highlights in the handbook include some removals. I did take out a bunch of information about MCC concurrent and CTE coursework, because we've kind of created a little flip chart to highlight that in a more meaningful way, and I can talk about that in just a second. But I did add the 12-point grading scale that we talked about last year in the springtime, that's on page eight.
Thank you.
Page eight, with the GPA weighting, and there's an emphasis, it does say, it begins with the class of 2022, which is our incoming freshman. One of the things I also highlighted on the bottom of page. We, as Lydia talked about, and Catherine mentioned, more work-based experience, our students currently, our seniors currently get out of school like after fourth period and go home, take a nap, go hang out somewhere. Some of them are studying for their MCC classes, but mostly hanging out. It does say at the very bottom of page 18, with some stars and. It does say at the very bottom of page 18, yeah, with some stars, and we will emphasize this during class meetings, that dismissal for seniors will not be available beginning of the school year 2019, 2020, so that they can begin to whine about that, and we can get through it. So that really is affecting our Gear Up class. We have a lot of state-required things, that federally funded grant, that we need to do with our Gear Up students, that work-based experience is a big piece of that, um, so we really can't have them leaving campus. Could they have four classes and leave campus to do that work experience-based experience? Absolutely, absolutely. And will it be necessarily every single day? Probably not. It could be a couple days a week for a couple hours. So essentially, they get a partial dismissal that's related to their work-based experience. Um, we've added some courses to the course guide, nothing in the art department, um, looks like a first class that was added as a family consumer science on page 42, and the description is not completely there, but it is the intro to education class, um, it's our way of growing our own, as we try to get more teachers here in Marshalltown, especially bilingual teachers, um, bring our, keep our kids here, we've talked about that a lot, keeping our kids here, so it's on page 43, Monica, I think, well, maybe not, it's on page 43 of mine, let's see.
Our numbers are different.
Yep, sorry. I had some links, I take, I had taken them out for you, didn't take them out for me. Um, FCS would be lower, yeah, there you go.
Page 34, I've got the start of it.
Yeah. So that intro to education class isn't a, um, concurrent class, I, a staff member saw that and has already volunteered, submitted her transcripts, wants to teach that class because she has 18 hours in education, she's really excited about it, but it will, um, give them an understanding of the teaching profession, and there will be a small practicum associated with that, while they'll be out in our buildings, working with our students, um, as they learn more about the teaching profession. Um, we added the second year of Algebra 1B in the math department. Um, Algebra 1 year, A, if you recall, replaced pre-algebra, and has been very successful. We have some, supplemented those students' learning with a math center, so they get additional support during the school day. Uh, we're pretty excited. So next year, there'll be an Algebra 1B, therefore, uh, the purpose of that is that by the end of sophomore years, all students will have completed Algebra 1. It's a big measure in our LOU plan for, um, working with our, um, EL students, and our, excuse me, that would be our migrant plan. Um, uh, in the music department, we did change the bands, we had band 910 and band 1112, those are now audition bands. One is called Symphonic Band, and the other one is called Wind Symphony. That way, they can work with, uh, they accelerate students on more difficult pieces while continuing to help all students learn music at, and increase their levels of difficulty as they go through there. So it's, those are, again, those are audition bands. They will still have marching band, those kinds of things together in the fall. In the social studies department, um, we are adding a world history at the freshman level. Currently, the freshmen take American History 1, and then the soph, uh, sophomores, they took American History 2. World History was an elective, so as part of the state social studies standards, um, to get students acclimated to more standards and information across the, our globe, they are adding a required course called World History instead of American History at the ninth grade level. There will be an advanced World History as well. Last year, Mr. Gosling proposed the Military Science, I did add that in specialized studies, just so that students can see that. He is, he's excited, and we're excited to offer that, and we're hoping that we'll have enough students that he's more than willing to come up to the high school and teach that during early morning. We've also included the description of school to work in the past, that's, um, been on the books, but it was never really clarified in the handbook, that's in the specialized session, section as well. Students can earn up to four work experience credits, um, with, and there's a little bit of discretion there for more at-risk students who are primarily working for variety reasons to earn additional credits. Um, we want to avoid with that, that class, that students learn, gain all of their elective credits through only with experience, because we believe that there are, um, career and technical education classes, Janelle, that you asked about, that students could benefit from taking as electives in the school. And especially, you know, things like welding and machines, um, business courses, those kinds of stuff, that will help them in the world of work. Finally, in the foreign language department, we have added a heritage Spanish, and that would be for our native speakers, um, so that they can use the competitive-based education model to accelerate their learning in Spanish and receive credit for their knowledge of Spanish at a, at a rapid pace. Not to say that we're holding them back, but sometimes, um, the, I would have to say from personal experience, that the non-native speakers get frustrated, uh, because they're going too fast maybe in the class, um, because the native speakers are ready to move to the next step right away. So those are the highlights of the new course guide.
Questions for Mrs. Wyon?
We've talked about, uh, honors classes having a higher than a 4.0, so we have the other schools do a weighted where honors is higher than a 4.0.
We had, we had talked about that, and our, the grading committee kind of didn't see the, the benefit of that. I know that Mr. Miller had mentioned that the, possibly, there are some students who are afraid to take some of those higher-level classes, um, because of the impact on their GPA. For example, pre-gen chem and gen chem 1, that's a very hard class. Often, we find students dropping that mid-year because it's that difficult. Calculus 1, I don't think we've had any students drop from there, or calculus 2, comp, um, those capstone courses, so I'm certainly open to suggesting, and I'm willing to reconvene that grading committee.
Why didn't people, um, why didn't people like that, I guess?
Why didn't they like it?
So, so you, you, you had a discussion with people about offering a higher GPA potential for those kinds of classes, and people didn't see the need for it.
They actually, they actually thought kids wouldn't, they still wouldn't enroll at them.
But they're going to enroll to get the college credits, right?
And they are, they definitely are.
So, to me, I, I think that's how you overcome that objection. Again, my youngest is graduating, so it doesn't impact personally, but when both of them are applying for colleges, Appalachian State for my oldest, and I can't believe you guys can't provide me a weighted GPA if your son took all these advanced classes. So we're trying to figure it out on the internet, and we called a counselor, and I just, with all of our kids, and we just hear that we're trying to get to go to college, and we have hundreds of semester hours that our seniors get every year, which is phenomenal in advanced classes, seems almost every college that my current seniors are applying for, asked, do you have a weighted GPA? And we don't do it. And for kids that take it and then get the credits, they should be recognized in the GPA versus the student who takes standard classes, graduates with a 3.8 and gets honors, and a student that takes honors classes and graduates with a 3.49, doesn't get any honors recognition, so.
That's a valid point.
This is, you, you mentioned when we last talked about it, that your last school back in Sioux City did this, had a weighted GPA.
We, we did for the capstone courses, so any, um, all ADP courses as well as the concurrent courses, and we have to be careful, because some of the concurrent, concurrent courses are, um, not gen ed courses, they're, they're career and technical education. So, in the, the CTE courses, you do not have to have, show proficiency on your Iowa assessments, and those would be things like welding, machine tool and die, um, utility linemen, those kinds of court, um, pathways, and then your other gen ed classes like pre-gen chem, calc 1, comp 1, those, um, intro to psychology, you do have to show proficiency. Um, so there's also that kind of touchy, you know, so are, do we want to wait those courses when there's already, right now, there's a, there's a barrier somewhat to some students, um, even being allowed to take those courses, it's not even an option for them if they are not proficient on the Iowa assessments.
This is one of, I mean, one of those things that, uh, from a competitiveness standpoint, when you're competing against kids from other districts, that get to show that, um, some would say artificially inflated GPA, others would say a real look at the kind of rigor that they went through in their high school career versus what others went through. And so, to me, it's an easy change to make that would make our kids that are, uh, applying for colleges look a little better when competing against others. And, and I know we all agree we want to do that.
Can I, um, convene them, let's do some data, like, from last year, and see how that would impact students, and then come back to you with some data? Is that okay?
Or even if you wanted to do like a subcommittee of not, you know, also, because we're big for this, I guess.
Absolutely, because I think if we can put some data in a spreadsheet, it'd be easy to really calculate that quickly. Okay.
Any other questions for Mrs. Wyon? I have a motion to approve the 2018-19 school year course of studies at MHS as presented.
Moved.
Second.
Carter Miller? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose the same. The motion carries 70.
Thank you.
Andrew Stevenson? No, sorry. Flipped a sheet, sorry.
I think this is a very colorful presentation, this has to do, this, this presentation on our college-wide community, um, which does highlight two-year schools as well as four-year schools, private and public, in-state, out-of-state, um, is data that is provided as, to us through National Student Clearinghouse. The data comes in a very daunting format, all encrypted and all that wonderful things, but it is a compilation of data, um, that goes all the way back to 1993 from the higher education community, and is, um, composed of 3,600 colleges and universities, uh, who share their data. Um, as I was researching this, I, um, also went to the National Educational Data Center to try to get some other data from the nation and for the state, as well as the Iowa Department of Education, to kind of give a little bit of comparison data about our students in, in that area. So, um, the first chart just shows the fall immediately after graduation, the percentage of MHS students who enroll in a college or university, two-year, four-year, private, public, or otherwise. So you, it, it is even as current as the kids who just graduated in 2017, 55% of them enrolled in a university right after high school. There, uh, our MHS grads are 10 times more likely to attend a public institution, and they're, in order of preference, is Marshalltown Community College, then Iowa State University, followed by the University of Iowa and the University of Northern Iowa. Of the fall enrollees, 60% are more likely to enroll in a two-year institution, so they are utilizing MCC and DMAC. Less than 1% enroll in out-of-state institutions. What's interesting about the new, next two slides is that enrollment in, during, any time during that first year, so maybe they don't go for semester, then they enroll second semester, and so you can see the increase that is occurring there, and the, and then in the first two years is the next slide, and it, there's quite a bit of decrease, or increase, like, 5% more. So, to me, that just represents that, that there's that hope, that I still can do this, um, that students feel confident, and for whatever variety of reasons, maybe they needed to work a little bit more, to have more money for college, or they, um, were in the military and doing their, um, basic training, as, so that they would have those military funds to support their education, whatever, whatever reason it is, they felt confident about coming back, um, and enrolling in, in college at whatever levels. So that, I thought that was, that was a pretty cool slide, to see that. Um, of course, we want them to stay there, right? Once they get there, we want them, them to stay there and, um, finish. So, here's the re, uh, retention of students, uh, after their first year. What was, um, good to see was that if they go to private school, 95% of them are more likely to stay there the second year at private school. Um, what was alarming was that only 72% stay at the two-year institution. Now, let's analyze that a little bit. Did they leave because they went to the four-year institution? And, and did they leave without getting that degree, um, just because, you know, I'm done with this set of two years of, now I'm going to go to the four-year? Who knows? I think that would have been reflected, that they had gone to another university somewhere else, but we'll see. So, earning degrees within six years, um, so the six years from now would have been 2010, so 41% of those graduates had earned their degree, and in 2011, 37% had earned that. Well, in six years, it could be two, four, or your master's. It's just any degree.
Any degree.
Any degree.
Yep.
And then the next ones are pretty colorful, I really like these, and it demonstrates the time that it took students to graduate, so in this class of 2010, 2011, um, their two-year, it would, if it took them two years and three years, and these are not, um, I don't think these, yeah, these are percentages, 12%, 5%, 15%, um, up to, all the way up to that six, um, years. There.
41%.
Right, if you add up all the percent, it, we should get to 41% of that class. Right, and that other one was, 2011 was 31%, the first one was 31, 41%. So a deeper dig down in the next slide is the class of 2010, which had, uh, size of 321. I love the way the purple band here of, as they graduate, and these are actually, these are numbers, not percentages. So by 2, 16, 17, 133 students in the class of 2010 had earned a degree. Could have been a two-year degree, could have been a technical degree, four-year degree, master's degree. As I talked about the course guide, and we have students taking more courses in high school to earn their college credits, the hope is that they earn a good, strong first year, so that if they do go on to MCC, they can get that second year right away and get that diploma knocked out within a year, and know that, hey, I can keep going. So that's the hope of that. What is really cool, too, is that the new to college doesn't just end in 2014, there's still students, and it shows in this chart for the class of 2010, enrolling in 2014. And of course, it, it also shows students who never make it to college and those who drop out, but then again, there's another spot where it shows that a return after a stop-out. So, the hope that I can still do this. And that goes on through all the different, um, classes, the class of 2011 is next. Same thing, love the purple band, like the, the small purple band, the bottom of students who are going at, uh, for the first time four or five years later, the decrease in the number of students not in the system. Class of 2012. And as we approach the class of 2014, who will graduate this year, that'll be an interesting piece of data, to know, how does Gear Up really impact, how did Gear Up really impact? Because now that we have class number two, Gear Up 2, how did that, Gear Up 1, how did that cohort fare with that extra money? And of course, our most recent graduates occurring there. So on average, 58% of MHS graduates enroll in post-secondary education, 70% of the students who enroll persevere by remaining enrolled for a second year, and what we really learned is that learning is not restricted by time, and that our students do have hope, that they can still go back and they can learn. So some of the data that you might be interested in, um, in 2014, that's the latest I could find for Iowa. In school districts surrounding us, the gradu, uh, the enrollment rate for the, the smaller districts around us was anywhere from 65 to 87% of their graduating classes. Okay, so we'll take that into account, how big their classes are. Um, in the nation, yeah, around the same time, it's 42% of students across the nation enroll in post-secondary options. That data was not easy- That data was not easy to find.
Sorry.
Yeah, they're interesting.
Did you say?
We're more like our neighbors than the national, I guess is what you're saying.
Yeah. I am, I am. Yeah, I mean, specifically in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, GMG was at sixty-five percent. And the highest was West Marshall at eighty-seven percent.
Did you say what the state average was? Did you have that?
I didn't, I could not find the state average.
But we know from, we know from data that's been shared in the state that, you know, Iowa has the highest grad, high school graduation rate, but it does not have a very high post-secondary graduation rate. So that's a big push statewide to try to get more kids going to some form of post-secondary and become a degree.
And so part of those conversations too, and again, going back to the CTE diplomas and degrees, we really want our students to help our industries as well here in manufacturing industries here in Marshalltown, is to pursue those options to finish that. So if you start in that welding program as a senior to finish that, it takes basically one more semester to finish that welding program at MCC, once you get started at MHS. So it is a good deal. Same thing with nurse aide, you can, you can finish that up within just a one or two semesters when you graduate. And that's our hope, is to, is to encourage students to get that good year under their belt. And, you know, going to communicate college, or community college, there's nothing wrong with that. But get that diploma. That is something that no one can ever take away from you. It's yours forever. So go ahead and get that, go through the graduation, graduation ceremonies, even if you are going to go to Iowa State, or UNI, or University of Illinois, whatever. Get that diploma under your belt.
Getting kids also into these local technical jobs like repair services, like, you know, HVAC, or plumbing, or any of those, you know, I constantly hear complaints from the guys in that area. Well, there's nobody that wants to do this job. And, and they're good jobs. And, but I think that they can be, as long, if they knew, really knew what it was.
Absolutely. I would say that's most of our businesses, even to go to Emerson. You know, we hear a lot about the engineers here, there are so many different jobs in that building. In accounting and advertising, you know, there's so many things that students could do. JBS is not just cutting meat on the floor. Again, the custodial, custodial and repair of all of that equipment.
Any maintenance.
Correct. Is, it's highly, highly required. They've come to solicit students for their programs at the high school, absolutely. So there, the hospital, there's more than doctors and nurses there. Ton of jobs there. So that's that whole ICAP plan, helping them to see the possibilities that exist.
Jackie, if we look at the first graph, you dropped a trend line on it. It's either flat or trending slightly down. Right? Fall after graduation, and we just heard presentation four about helping establish these college plans at pre-kindergarten, which is incredibly awesome. Is there, is there anything, is it our demographics? Is there something you think that's driving this trend downward?
Well, I think you heard Lydia say that we want to do potentially a college visit like on a Saturday to help the parents to understand what the experiences that their child will have. And, you know, even if they're leery about sending their student away to live away from home, Marshalltown Community College is, is an excellent choice. They can still live at home, they can go to class there. And then eventually understand what the needs of their student is. We just met with some parents and students about the National Hispanic Institute, which opens the doors to our, that particular population to help the students and parents understand about advocacy, first of all, for their, for themselves. But also, it's, it's held on a private college campus, so the students have yet another exposure to college. And they're away from home for a few days, and then it helps the parents. I remember bringing a group of kids back, their parents were there waiting for me to bring their babies back. But the kids had a great experience, and so it was an awesome time for the students to share, wow, this was fantastic. And so, you know, we just have to keep doing those kinds of little things, I think, just to help parents and support their understanding of what a college-going community is, is.
Are you able to pull out the kids overall who are first-generation potential college attendees?
We do not have that data at our fingertips. It's not a question we ask.
Yeah.
We should add that to registration.
But it's a thing. I mean, if your parent has been to college, there's a whole different perspective at home versus, and it doesn't just go with one group or another. It's everyone, if you have a parent that's not in college.
I think that's one of the criteria for the map.
Right.
So.
It is, but we, we don't, I mean, I think, I think Janelle's asking on a larger scale of our fourteen, fifteen-hundred students, do we know who, do we know?
Who's hearing about college at home?
Yeah. Have we ever asked the, the parents, do you have this much, what's your highest level of education? We haven't asked that.
That's a great point, because even the comment earlier about the, the help at MCC for the FAFSA, that's, that's a ridiculously daunting task to complete. And if you've never had to do it, and you're a first generation, there may be some people that just throw their hands up and say, you know what? I, we just can't figure this out, and they don't know that the help's out there.
You can have a college degree and say that. I agree.
Right.
I think many of us were at the keynote too, at the school board convention, and heard Steve Pemberton's upward bound story and how identifying kids who haven't had college experience is such an important thing from freshman year on because those advisors, counselors, et cetera, are doing what many parents are not able to do, just because they purely don't have the background knowledge or experience, which I think the Jensen Poverty Book also hits home with about filling those gaps, opportunity gaps for kids.
Well, and I can, I can say from personal experience that being a first generation, that, you know, every year at high school, we showed up the day before classes started, picked our classes, and we started classes. Why wouldn't I think the same thing happened in college? And that was my experience, and fortunately, I was able to navigate that. However, that's what people go by, is what, what they know. So that's why we have a college application day. And we pull kids and seniors into the, the library to fill out an application and have lots of different staff from different community or colleges there to help with that. And that's why we have that acceptance day, college, and recognize that, you know, these students have been accepted into college. And it's not too late, though, either, when we do that acceptance day. You still can get registered, especially at MCC.
And I think just within the last year or two, they've made some significant adjustments with FAFSA to make it more user-friendly. And I know they're still working on even doing more, recognizing that it's a pretty cumbersome, or it's been a pretty cumbersome process. And of course, for our students, if their parents aren't, you know, college, if they haven't attended college, or if they have language barrier issues, that just even further complicates it. But just completion of FAFSA in and of itself is a pretty high indicator of whether or not a student will go and try to be successful at the secondary level. And the mother's level of education is a high indicator of potential for post-secondary success as well.
So if we could ask that question for both parents.
Yeah, that'd be good information.
Degree information.
Something to add to the conversation is, for the last ten years, I've taught at a private college in the evenings, and I see a lot of Marshalltown grads come through there, five, six years after graduation. And kind of the conversation they have with me is, we weren't quite sure what we wanted to do. We didn't want to waste our money, so we went out, we spent a little time in the working field, and decided I wanted to be an educator, or I wanted to be a social worker, or do something in human service field. So that's why I'm enrolling now instead of right out of school, because I wasn't sure what I wanted to do, and it's really expensive to do.
I was eight years after high school before I went to college, so I was in the military. So it's, you'd lose me in your stance.
I was one of those stop, stop-out ones, came back after a stop.
Well, and there, you know, in Marshalltown, there's, even though in many places, the jobs have changed or disappeared, there still are many opportunities that kids could access if they're college and career-ready that don't require a post-secondary degree. You know, maybe it's a certification, or an endorsement, or training within the company, which we're going to, those aren't reflected, obviously, in this data. And so as part of our process of building out work-based learning experiences, we're going to try as best we can to track students that either earn or enter into those programs before they leave. So we kind of have a handle on that, too.
So I know you've, you've mentioned before the, I think, college career-ready dashboard you're trying to work on, or is that, is this the same dashboard that the previous presentation you mentioned?
Yeah, I think that was what Dee was referencing, and, and we actually had a first run-through with it. We identified a couple other areas that we want to include and collect data on, so they're working on integrating that. But hopefully, we'll be able to present that to you before the end of the school year. We really would like to have it ready to roll out to students and parents for next year, for sure.
So I guess my, my question then is going to be, can, can we tie this to the, to the plans? Can we know, here's how many students and which students plan to go to school, and then here's how many actually followed through with that?
Yeah, this dashboard, you can, you really can dig down into the student data. It gives you a general picture, then you pick a little thing, and you dig down further, and you dig down further, and you just can keep digging down, right to what you're asking.
And then that would also maybe be a place to store this, you know, the parents' education. I don't know if that's on the, the ICAP or not, but. I, I saw this, and I saw the previous presentation, I can't help but think it'd be nice to, if these two things were somehow linked in the future. Which I realize they come from different sources, and you're developing that, but that's.
Well, I think for sure this will hopefully affirm and validate our efforts on the college and career readiness. You know, we should see, hopefully, upward trends continue or, or start up based on if we're able to better educate and guide and direct people to do the things that we believe that they need to do to not just get a high school diploma, but to be truly college and career-ready. And it should lead to higher levels of attainment, and hopefully, higher levels of students going into post-secondary. And, and I think that's really where the gap is, for the most part, if our, our kids that are going into those areas, at least when you compare it nationally or to the state, do fairly well. We just got to get more of them going in that direction. We've got half of our kids that are choosing not to pursue any kind of post-secondary.
If you look at the board agenda, there were two attachments that went with Lydia and the team's presentation. One was like a twenty-two-page narrative. You don't need to bring it up, Josh, but the fourth column in that document that was given to us as a planning document by the AEA and through the Department of Ed, listed outcomes. And there were outcomes listed in there that we currently are, have in place and are able to use. But I think the development of using the Student Clearinghouse data in addition to the dashboard data will give us much more of an integrated look, I think is what you're referring to, right? Of the ICAP, the five outcomes in the ICAP, along with this type of information. They should go hand-in-hand.
And we will update the dashboard frequently as students earn certifications, as their ACT scores come in, as they earn credits, their attendance quarterly, as they get involved in community service. That'll be uploaded frequently.
Continuing to find barriers that you can actually do something about.
Correct.
And so, speaking of barriers, and Jackie had mentioned it with, you know, we've got a, a national teacher shortage right now. And, and on top of that, we continue, even though Marshtown probably fares relatively well in comparison to our peers, you know, we're a far cry from having an employee base that mirrors our student demographic in terms of racially. And so, you know, we've been working with Marshtown Community College to figure out, you know, how can we provide while kids are in high school, an opportunity, if they do so, well, first, to get exposed to education as a potential profession. And secondly, if they truly do have interest in going that route, how can we help expedite that process and get them very close to, if not completed with their degree while, without leaving Marshalltown? As if the draw is they need to also work while they go to school, or culturally, they don't, they're not comfortable leaving home, or what have. How can we at least get them to a place where three, if not all four years of that degree can be completed between Marshtown High School, Marshtown Community College, and a four-year institution that's willing to partner with us? So we'll be excited to see how that develops. And, and, and like some other districts, we may even put a caveat that, you know, if you pursue this program through us, we'll guarantee you at least an interview with successful completion of it.
We do have Buena Vista at MCC, so we're hoping that that may marry up nicely with that education area.
Yeah, or even Iowa State University, who's close and has a lot of other partnerships with Marshtown Community College, so.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Now it's you.
Okay. You have a document that was shared with you, it's a couple, a few pages long. It's an update on some work that's been going on over the last semester. Some goals, and that we've set to address some challenges, and some possible actions or solutions to help us meet our goals. Particularly, these are all directed at our young bobcats. So getting three-year-olds, four-year-olds, and five-year-olds enrolled in Marshalltown and ready to be successful once they're here. So you'll see goal one and goal two, and then you'll also see some additional information at, at the end that I'll share with you, and then we can, I can answer any questions that you might have. So goal, goal one is just in general, trying to increase participation in the statewide voluntary preschool program within our public Marshalltown preschool classrooms, as well as our partners in statewide voluntary, and then any other local preschools that provide four-year-old preschool programming. So we want to emphasize that this is an opportunity that's there. You don't have to leave Marshalltown to get it, and that we highly encourage participation. And the reasons why are listed below. We note that kids who are kindergartners here, who have documented attendance at preschool, are addressing or able to demonstrate these school readiness skills that you see listed in those six bullets, which I won't read to you, but for those in early childhood, these are key indicators, foundational skills, academic and social-emotional, that kids need to be successful when they head elementary school. Our current reality in seventeen eighteen is that seventy-six percent of our current kindergartners have participated in a preschool program, which, to be honest, is an actually really great number. It's, it's something to be proud of. It's higher than most urban districts that have anecdotally shared their information at meetings I've been at. Ideally, we'd want even more kids to participate in preschool if their parents wanted to make that choice for them. And some of the data that I'm sharing in that chart, I think, is pretty indicative. And granted, this is a one-years group, but this year's kindergartners that we have, there's an N of three hundred and seventy-nine, and again, that number floats, so depending on what day you're collecting the numbers, it might be a little bit higher, a little bit lower. But what we did look at is at fall FAS testing, so that would have been, um, gosh, the window was a little bit off this year, but I think it was late September, very late September, first week of October possibly, with our kindergartners who were tested in literacy and reading only. You can see the kids who went to our six public preschools, eight classrooms we have altogether, that fifty-nine percent of those students were proficient as kindergartners. And then our parents who reported other preschool experience, so that could have been private preschools or preschools out of the community, even out of the state in some cases. Fifty-eight percent of those students were proficient as kindergartners. And then we had a, let's see, what would that be? Twenty-four, we had a hundred and five students who did not report any preschool experience by their parents. And we found within that group that only twenty-eight percent of those students were proficient in the fall. So that's quite a, quite a difference. And I think it speaks to the importance of what's happening in preschool and the curriculum that we're actually teaching them. And then on page, or the second slide, you see, you just see that same table in a graph form. Additionally, you'll see there, that shows us as a district, and then the table below that has our six elementary schools and kind of a breakdown of our three hundred and seventy-one enrollees on, I believe this was closer to count. and kind of a breakdown of our 371 enrollees on, I believe this was closer to count day. And you can see some variance there with a low of Anson and Hoagland in terms of preschool, I'm sorry, kindergartners who attended preschool, only 69%. Where we have a high at, for example, Franklin, 86% of Franklin kindergartners attended a preschool or reported attending a preschool. So, that's where we come up with the average of 76%. So, what kind of solutions do we, did our team come up with to address the number of 76% and hopefully, increase it even more? That includes continued outreach and partnership with MICA, Bobcat Academy, and St. Francis, who were our partners, initial partners this year. I'm happy to report that Bobcat is, has confirmed they want to expand participation with us and increase their slots. So, that's great news. We also, again, reached out for a second time for two other local preschool programs, like the YMCA, Elam, and Sunshine, to see if they wanted to partner with us in the near future, next school year. We'll continue to do door-to-door personal contacts using Infinite Campus to try to identify age-eligible children that are in the home of our current students, partnering with CAPS and other healthcare providers to try to disseminate our information. Before you're in the system, you know, the chances of you being connected to our social, being connected to our social media or getting our information is less. But we do know that parents of children in the zero-to-five range definitely go to pediatricians. And so, just last week, actually, I was able to attend with Emily a meeting at the hospital with the healthcare provider team and talk to them about who we should talk to and who we should meet with and get our brochures, too. So, that was, that was a great conversation and one of many avenues we're gonna use. We also were able to identify from preschool teachers and that meeting at the hospital, current locations where many of our Southeast Asian families are worshiping. And there's usually connections that you can make through churches. So, we plan to share our updated preschool brochure when it's finalized and, and board-approved. The other barrier that was noted by many, many of the parents we phone-called in November to say, hey, why didn't you go to preschool last year? We see you're enrolled with us for kindergarten, and is there anything you'd like to share with us? And many of them noted it was because of a half-day program. They were not able to transport their children in the middle of the day. And that, we, we knew that going into this year worked to get busing off the ground. And it's been a big hit. As you can see, there are many of our parents are, are using busing in the AM and the PM. And then, there's some historical data there you can see about enrollment, kindergarten enrollment and preschool enrollment over the last five years. Okay, so that was Goal One. And then, Goal Two is, once we have all the kids here in preschool, our, our mission or our work is to make sure that at least 80% of them are meeting the end-of-year benchmarks for preschool. And yes, I know, it sounds a little funny to be, for those of us, I think, in my generation older, to talk about benchmarks in preschool and end-of-year assessment. This, you really have to kind of reframe what preschool is in terms of the pre-K-12 system and what emphasis has been given to assessments and how our state is supporting preschool programming. And one of the things that is part of the statewide program is the use of IGDs, which is, which stands for Individual Growth and Development Indicators. And this is an assessment that the teachers give one-on-one with each child. There's sub-tests, and it's very pre-literacy-based. And you can see there, the percentage of students that had tested proficient over the last two spring testing windows. And then, I just put in there for a baseline, so you can kind of get a picture. Only 7% of our 208-ish preschoolers in the public schools this year in preschool are actually proficient when they walk in the door. So, we have, we make great growth from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. But 80% is an ambitious goal, and it's definitely something that aligns with what we do K-12. So, we can talk about interventions for the 20% of kids that are not ready at the end of the year or during the year. So, that's a stair-step goal to help us get to 80% proficient. And some solutions or steps on how to get there, you'll see listed, some of the professional development they've been working on as a team. And curriculum alignment, there's a lot of work that's in progress right now with, with ST Math and early childhood literacy, as well as positive behavior supports PBIS in the early childhood classroom. And then, the last item that you see as a solution of how to possibly increase the number of kids that are ready for kindergarten is to increase the number of time or the amount of time that we have with students. So, we currently have a four-day-a-week half-day program, which allows students around 12 hours a day. And we are, or I am proposing, after studying this with the team, to increase that from four days a week to five days a week and maintaining the half-hour, the half-day programming model. Just to give you a little background, this proposal's been vetted with a couple different groups. And there were some concerns raised by our preschool teachers and others about the ability for them to run a five-day-a-week half-day program with the challenges of having special ed students in their classroom and an AM classroom of preschoolers and a PM classroom of preschoolers. So, we did go back as a team and come up with some five different ideas on how to address the preschool teachers' concerns, including investigating how we program for our three-year-olds, adjusting the start and end times of the AM and PM session to give teachers a little bit more cushion in the middle of the day for planning and working with para's, adding some more non-attendance days during the school year to allow teachers to work on the state reporting, which is called GOLD. That's essentially a preschool report card. And possibly capping class sizes at 17 versus 20, which is what we can go to now, which, based on our current enrollment, would not cause us to have a waitlist or cause us to turn people away. So, we did come up with five solutions that were shared with the preschool teachers in response to the concerns that they raised about moving to, from a four-day to a five-day program. And the last page that you see there is, and you'll see in Reddit, it says, "Future Possible Solutions." So, those are the two goals that we want to work for, 18 and 19. And then, moving forward, we'll have to reevaluate. There was interest in starting a transitional kindergarten classroom or classrooms in Marshall Town for next year. But at this time, the work on Goal One and Goal Two is gonna take precedence over that decision, especially as we talk about facilities and space. So, you'll see there our open enrollment out summary and the number of students that are leaving us in kindergarten, which may or may not be due to the fact that we have a, do not have a transitional kindergarten. So, what I'm presenting to you tonight is information. And then, this will come back to the board on February 5th for action because it requires a board approval to change our programming from a four-day to a five-day half-day program moving forward.
Can we get copies of the things that, that, there was a graph that we didn't have in ours?
I think our board docs was an older version. It's very similar.
We didn't have...
Right, there's just a couple of things that weren't in ours.
And then, that graph, we didn't have that.
And the table, too. The table right above that, we didn't have that. Yep.
So, maybe you could give Vicki all of those pages?
This?
And she could replace that? And could we also see the concerns that, yes?
The emails? Okay, are the five solutions? Yes. I can send those out.
So, one of, next question?
Sure.
Well, one, the solution that you've come with is to go from four-days-half-day to five-days-half-day. And that's what you're gonna come to us on the fifth. And so, was there discussion, oh, I'm sorry. Was there discussion about running five-days-full-day? Or if it's programming for five-days and daycare? Or some sort of childcare for the other half of the day? So that a preschooler, transitional kindergartner, kid under five years old, was there in the school all day long?
I, no, we did not have a discussion about an all-day model. That did not happen. We did have some discussions about a five-day, five-hour-a-day model that would allow the preschoolers to get home on buses around 2:00 or 1:30 instead of the end of the day, when our routes are really busy with taking everyone else home. But that was not the preferred option. And it would cause a potential of lack of capacity. So, if you did go to a five-day, five-hour-a-day model, you would have eight teachers that could take at most 20 kids. So, that's 160 kids. We know that we're expanding spaces at one of our privates, and we potentially are signing on another private partner that's not been formally board-approved yet. So, I was confident that we'd have enough seats to seat our 200-ish kids that we keep getting. But what I'm wondering is, what would be, what would be our solution if, for some reason, this 76% jumps to 90 next year? What if we're, is in the community that busing is awesome, and you should send your kid, et cetera, et cetera? And then, we've now gotten to a place where we have a waiting list of kids who can't be served because we changed our AM/PM model? So, that would be, that would be a deterrent from moving to that system.
When you, when a, let's say, my child would go in the morning. I'd drop him off in the morning. Where do they go at noon?
They go to a different, they go everywhere, a home daycare.
Where do you bus them to if I wanted them to?
We bus them to whatever place the parents ask them, within the Marshall Town boundaries.
So, are some of them bused, like, to the Y? And then, the Y does childcare in the afternoon?
Yep. They go all kinds of places. Neighborhood, in-home babysitters, back to their parents, childcare centers.
Grandparents.
Mm-hmm, grandparents, yep. They have to go to the same place every day, but they go to all kinds of different places.
Yes, and, and that's the only way we could, well, there are two issues that I see. One is physical space capacity.
Yeah.
Within our own schools, we'd need to double the number of rooms if we were to expand. The other is funding. I don't know anyway, whether it was a daycare or a full-day preschool experience, we only received 10 hours a week worth of funding from the state. So, there'd have to be another funding source to accommodate the costs associated with that.
We'd need, to go full day, we'd need to double the teachers and double the rooms.
Well, to be, given our kindergarten class sizes for the last five years, and to be a good community partner and steward, I wouldn't say that we'd need to have available slots to serve 400 children. Because, you know, we want to be a partner to the Bobcat Academy and all these other places that can. So, there's around 100 seats in the community where kids can go to high-quality preschool. So, what we need to look at backwards is, how do we plan for and program for around 250 kids? I think that would be our ideal number.
What I mean is, if we have the current number of students, but we take them into an all-day class, you have to have twice as many rooms and twice as many teachers to handle that?
Possibly. It wouldn't be twice because our classes are under capacity. We have the capacity right now to serve, I think it was 306 students, given eight teachers serving, they, at max, they'd serve 40 kids apiece.
We'd increase some of the class sizes from where they currently are.
Right. So, if, other than Rogers, which can only take 30 kids, if the other seven took 40, we'd be at 300. And right now, we're only at 208. So, we, if, you know, 80 kids came out of the woodwork in February and said, hey, we forgot to sign up for preschool. On paper, we have space for them in our classes right now. It would push us to capacity with staffing and space.
But I'm saying, if you go to full day, you lose half your teachers, right, basically? And half your classrooms?
We'd probably need to increase by a third.
Yeah.
That's what happened when we went from half-day kindergarten to all-day kindergarten.
Mm-hmm.
You know, first of all, we don't have the space. That's why it needs to be a discussion topic with facilities.
And then, that's, that's only, then, your other issue was transportation. You don't, I, 'cause I don't know this, but do you put preschoolers in the same buses as older kids?
We cannot do that.
Cannot, right.
We can't mingle those funds together. So, the four-year-olds ride on their own three buses that serves six sites. And that happens AM and PM.
But I'm assuming same buses run at a different time? Or is that not true?
The morning and afternoon times are the same.
Okay.
And then, they have that midday route that's, doesn't exist for K-12.
We're also talking four-year-olds. That's a long day for a four-year-old.
Mm-hmm. It is.
So, we're going back to the model we used to have?
The five-day programs?
The five-day program. So, if we're doing so well with preschool experience, is there a reason why we need to go back? What's...
We're doing well in terms of having students participate. I wouldn't say that 59% is, is where we aspire to be in terms of readiness for kindergarten. Like, you know, the goal being 80% of where our kids being ready to learn and ready for kindergarten-ready is the goal. And this is a step in the right direction, increasing, it won't be an exact increase of 20%. You know, you think on paper, you're going from four days to five days, you're increasing their excess 20%, but it would be a little bit less than that because they'll have, they have beginning-of-year home visits where they start a week late. And then, we're also proposing, and I'll share that email with you, six additional days where the preschoolers wouldn't have preschool so that the teachers could do their GOLD program and special education updates. So, that would decrease that 20% to, I'm guessing it'll be about a 15% increase.
So, is there a cost number we're gonna see at the next meeting for that? Or is this covered by something else?
No, it, this, moving to a five-half-day from four-half-day increases, doesn't increase our teachers, they're already contracted. It depends on what happens with three-year-old programming for preschool. But again, the three-year-olds are all special education-funded. So, we just haven't laid on a final outcome on how Matt's budget in special education can support a possible three-year-old-only special education classroom. Because in doing so, then he would be, we would be removing some of that funding that helps fund the four-year-old teacher's salary. It would be repurposed into that person. So, then, the preschool budget would have to absorb more of the preschool teacher's salary, which, we just have to crunch those numbers and see how many kids we're talking about. So, it's not additional funding, it's switching the funding source, I guess, is a better way to look at it.
So, every preschool teacher, 30% of their salary comes out of special ed funds because we know they're gonna serve some kids with disabilities. Of the two associates in the classroom, one of those is special ed-funded, one of those is preschool-funded. If we take kids out of rooms and serve them differently, then we have to shift or add the special ed funding somehow to cover that need? Can we have a quick figure out what that looks like?
So, we will have to increase somewhere the teaching capacity a little bit? Right, so there will be, there'll be a cost somewhere, increase on net?
There could be. So, if Matt possibly takes one of our eight preschool teachers and repurposes that position into a three-year-old only, then I, out of the preschool budget, would have to hire a replacement teacher for that person. But we had run numbers back in December, and, and we had the capacity within the budget to hire a ninth preschool teacher, which we're not doing at this time because we don't have the numbers to support that. But it would be, if that makes sense. So, this, that person's salary, that person, that allowance that's within the budget would offset the change.
So, you can fill it, you can fit it within your budget, and the next meeting is just, you're, we're just approving your plan?
Right.
Okay.
We do have to adjust para contracts. So, right now, para's are contracted four days, four, the four days, full days that the kids are in the preschool, and they're there a half-day on Wednesdays, even though there are no kids there. So, we would need to add a half-day for 30 weeks to adjust that, to make sure.
And the funding changes, as Matt alluded to, will be in either of two categorical funds. It would... funds. It would be shifting of dollars that are either preschool-related or special ed-related.
So that Wednesday, that's being taken away, that was planning time and professional development. That will be increased where, throughout the week.
So that will go, when the school calendar, which is on the agenda for tonight, when the school calendar is finally finalized, what we'll do is look at those 14 PD days or however many days it ends up being, and determine which are preschool-only and which are days that the preschool team is needed to be with their buildings and/or the district doing other work. And so then what we're trying to do is build back a system where the days, they're not, it's not gonna be an even-even, meaning, you know, we took 30 Wednesdays from you for planning, we're gonna give you 30 back. It will not be that cut and dry. But they will, we're doing our best in this plan to add days back in to compensate for the planning that they're missing during that time.
Do we offer sort of a, an organized or integrated, I'd like to enroll my child in preschool, be it a morning session or an afternoon session? And do we say, hey, you can sign up for the Y childcare on the other half of the day? Do we, do we offer that or do we?
Sort of. So on February 25th is when the Saturday registration for pre-K and K happens at the Marshalltown Mall. And at that time, all of those private sites are also there, accepting enrollment and accepting applications in addition to Marshalltown. And we take up the bulk of, of that space. But also on our brochure and information, it gives the lists, the ones who are formerly private partners with us, their contact information so that they, you know, like, let's say I'm a new parent and I go, oh, my gosh, I didn't realize my child only would be there from 8:30 to 11:00. And the bus will get him or her wherever at 11:45. So what's out there? And then there's sort of like a, I guess a brochure, for lack of a better word, but a list, a laundry list of people in the commu, not people, partners that are official partners of our schools that we can list there for people to call on the other half-day. I think there's a lot of behind-the-scenes conversations that go on there too with teachers connecting parents to daycares. And Emily takes a lot of phone calls, working with people's AM PM schedules and trying to balance bus routes and balance school enrollment and balance where our special needs kids are. It's a, a non-stop job, for sure.
This feels to me like doing this really well is a, is a important component of stemming open enrollment.
I would hope so. That's, that last chart, I think you could see, I hope, on page three was, you know, trying to stem the tide of those 40-ish, 50 kids.
So I'm not.
Keeping half of them back here, for sure.
Sorry, familiar with the lingo, the, when you say private partners, that's childcare partners or they're preschool partners?
Our private preschool partners that are official, we advertise on their behalf too. So we say, oh, you don't like this, you don't like the times, start and end times we have at Frank, they're the same district-wide, but at Franklin, for example, then maybe the Y is a better fit for you. Or maybe Bobcat is. And then Emily can, you know, give the director's name and number, email and, and send people.
Some of the, some of the private partners offer daycare as well as preschool services.
That's right.
I think that's what you were getting at, Mike, is can we just line up, can we help them get the daycare part of it?
Yeah, I wanna sign up with you, but I gotta work from 8:00 to 5:00. And so I need someplace for my kid to go to have lunch and make sure they're safe.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
I get it that a full day of education is, is a lot for a four-year-old, but.
It's not like a matching service, and we don't go that far, but we, I would say, there's a great level of collaboration, whether it's, you know, the school secretary helping identify places that people can go, or Emily Banks, who's our preschool director, who knows much better than I do about the start and end times and days of the week of all the people that do four-year-old and daycare in, in the district.
And it's vice versa with the priest, private preschools, they do the same thing. They offer, if they've said, my child's already in preschool, well, he can come here in the afternoon. So it's happening already where they're attending district preschool and going to head start in the afternoon.
Yep. I think it's, it's kind of ironic what we're talking about here tonight because it's the, the capstone, you know, getting them super successful in where they wanna be as adults. And it's sort of hard sometimes to roll your brain back about 16 steps to say, that starts when they're three or four. Because if you start kindergarten a year behind where you're, where achievement tests say you're supposed to be, if you wanna go with that measurement, then that just puts an undue amount of pressure on our teachers in many ways to, you know, have kids develop their language, develop their social emotional skills. And on top of it all, we've got all this reading and math that they have to be able to do in kindergarten. So I really do believe this is a super important work for us to get right in Marshalltown.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. So, school calendar, after our last meeting in December, we took the board direction and put out a second survey that first surveys, you remember, focused more on the professional development piece and whether to continue with Wednesday early outs or go to a full-day PD model. Our preference was to move towards a full PD model. So we put out another survey to staff or employees and then parents, looking at the second question, spring break or no spring break. And so option A was the calendar with spring break built in, as we've had in the recent past. Option B was a calendar with no spring break but an extended Easter break. And our employee survey came back with about 55% leaning towards wanting to sustain spring break calendar. Our parents' survey, Andrew could speak to this better than I, had some technical difficulties that he's been working through, but that, we believe that fell on 55% wanting the no spring break approach. So what I would recommend, what I'd like to recommend, unless the board sees differently for the next meeting, is that we do an alternate-year approach where next year we'd offer up a non-spring break schedule.
No, I thought the first year was a full week of spring break, right? Yeah.
No, I'm saying, next year we'd go the no spring break.
Okay.
And then the following year, we'd bring back a spring break calendar to be considered.
Why would you recommend that?
Just because the parents landed themselves on the no spring break line.
But you know you could vote like a billion times for that.
Okay, yeah. And that was an issue with it, where I was trying to make it easy to use for parents and some, it was too easy to use. But, but I could kind of tell by the, by the numbers coming in, as far as when they were voting, that they did lean a little bit towards the no spring break because you can tell of, of the time it comes in, as far as the timestamp. And then some chose to rattle off several in a row, which, yes, it was unfortunate. But I guess I learned my lesson on that one, but.
Well, and the other thing we could do too, we can resurvey parents and do it in such a way that that's not possible.
Yeah, we just have to have them log in or enter some sort of email address or something like that, so, which is something we didn't do this last time, so.
That was one of the things that we discussed at the calendar committee meeting. And that was one of the suggestions on the table at the time, was alternate spring break this year, no spring break, spring break this year, no spring break. So I don't think that that's an unfair suggestion.
It's just not based on data that you're sure of.
From the parents, huh?
Yeah.
I mean, if you look at this data, the staff data, the previous data, it seems to be a pretty even split. I don't know, you're getting consensus either way. Is there a, from an administration standpoint? And is there a better way? Is there one that you favor or you think, if, if you were to tell people the pros and cons, there isn't an advantageous one? Or is it really just a preference?
It's really just a preference thing. In my past experiences, even in other districts, the strongest opinion usually is 60-40 split. But after you've done it a certain way over a few years, then it tends to get closer to the 55-45 or even the 52-48 type split. And so, you know, even with 55% of our employees indicating they prefer to sustain spring break, there's 45% of them nearly have.
It's not a strong majority.
So the alternating approach tends to be, I think, the fairest to meet, I mean, there's gonna be people unhappy no matter which way it lands. Alternating gives both of them the opportunity every other year to have it one way or the other. I mean, the reality is that in many cases, for parents that value to win and wish to do a spring break, they're probably gonna do it whether we got it calendared or not. You know, as long as their kids are in good standing and that sort of thing. But, but again, I don't have any strong preference one way or the other. I just think probably the, the balanced approach is the best approach, given the data that we've received thus far.
Is there any, any benefit to continuity, consistency, year-to-year? No? Seeing some shrugs? No?
In the past, we've had both sides. Throughout several years, it's gone back and forth. So it's not like it's, we've had one way for a long time, we haven't, so, yeah.
The downside of alternating is you upset everybody, right?
I agree.
Or you make everybody happy. Yeah, I suppose if you're a glass hole down a person's feet, you pick one, you at least know that half the people got what they wanted, right?
So I've been through the alternating thing. I'm with Ross. I think it just makes everybody unhappy. That's not, that's not a system that I'd be in favor of or vote for.
Yeah, I think you gotta go with one and just stick to it.
And if it was the one with the spring break, does that align with the universities or colleges?
Yeah, the community college, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we have in the recent past made sure, it should be a priority to align that with, with MCC and I O C.
I think all the schools around us typically do a spring break every year.
Some of them don't. I think East Marshall took a longer winter break because they're not doing spring break, I believe. Is that correct?
Yeah.
With staff and parents split, I'll take your recommendation. I don't have a dog in this fight.
Well, and again, if people are uncomfortable with the parent input for the reasons that we spoke about, we could resurvey the parents on that as well and do it in a way that assures that people only vote once.
Did we get enough participation to make that worthwhile?
What were the numbers for the parents?
The parents got sidetracked and there was somebody.
You mean the raw numbers, like there's 400 stuff?
Oh, well, those raw numbers are also skewed because someone would vote over and over again. And that would add to the number of votes, but.
Just what was the total number of votes, just out of?
Oh, it got up to 600, mid-600s, but it, I could tell that somebody was voting over and over again, so, yeah, so.
So, I mean, I, I personally, because I can do it, I personally clicked it like 20 times, just like, why can't I vote so many times? That was you? And then I got a text from somebody that said, I voted 50 times! And so, I mean, there's two people, 100 votes between the two of us, just because we can do it.
So the data's just?
So the data's like all messed up.
Yeah, I know.
We have like eight people for the 600 votes. I mean, you really could.
If that's the case, we didn't get much participation in the first place.
Yeah, yeah. So what I would say, nobody really cares. Except for those eight people that voted 600 times.
We can do it again and.
And I, I mean, if you, if you got that low of participation, if you did it again, are you gonna get that much more participation?
Maybe less.
Maybe less.
You'll get less.
600 is, 600 is a lot if it was 600 people, though.
No, 600 votes, yeah, the, we couldn't.
600 total votes that could've come from.
300 people.
Two weeks, survey them about the early outs versus.
It was about 500, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I, I guess my preference would be to resurvey them in a way that forbids more than one vote. And lesson learned. And then we'll take that into account along with the employees, because if both of them land on preference towards spring break, then that kind of answers our question.
Sounds good.
I don't know, I mean, you're gonna, I think we expect a low, a low participation and a near 50-50 split. I'm just not sure what the value of waiting longer and asking.
I think the only value is, then you have pure transparency and nobody can ever come back and say, you didn't give me a chance, right? And if it. I think there's great value in that. What's the cost? It's just core time, right?
My time, yeah, some.
And that's worth nothing.
Thank you very much.
Everywhere I go.
After this survey, yes, it is.
Everywhere I go, I see Andrew with a camera.
Yes.
It's crazy.
He sends it from his camera.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's doing the fees?
We're a little bit behind schedule. Okay, this is an action item in front of you tonight to increase our student book fees for just elementary students this year, I'm sorry, for 18-19, for K-6 students from $40 to $45.
Questions for Dr. Stevenson?
Dr. Shute, I appreciated your overview of comparisons of our fees and your, and your news and notes thing you sent to us. Or was that you that did that? Thank you. That was, that led some comparison.
Lessened than from last year.
That we, we are not out of line in our book fees compared to all of our surrounding districts, so that's good.
And the fees you saw were their 17, 18 fees, so granted, they could keep them the same or raise them, but either way, we're still under.
In line.
Everyone else, at least at the elementary level.
Questions?
You need a motion?
I need a motion to accept the fee rate as presented.
Go move it.
Second.
Miller Carter, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Motion carries 7-0. Lynn? Lynn? Lynn?
Lynn's not here.
Who's turn this one?
So we provided you some narrative, I think, within news and notes about the desire to replace some aging and not less-than-ideal functioning equipment within food service. They went out for bids which were due on December 29th with, and had a bid opening on January 2nd. The food service department is asking for board acceptance of the low bids for those Total for all of the items is $68,470.11, and it would be funded strictly through the food service budget, which Lynn and Brian have worked together on.
Questions for Dr. Shute? May I have a motion to approve the equipment bids as presented?
So.
Second.
Harris Heitman.
That side of the language.
Harris Heitman, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries 7-0. Mr. Wesley?
Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to talk a little bit about Marshalltown's plans for utilizing E-Rate this year and then asking for approval to publish some RFPs for E-rated related services. Just to recap, again, E-Rate is the term used by the Universal Service Fund to refer to the schools and library portion of that. And in a nutshell, E-Rate provides discounts to schools to obtain affordable telecommunications and access to the internet. So how does Marshalltown leverage E-Rate? We have a fiber lease connection between our buildings, which we receive E-Rate funding for. Our internet service provider is also E-Rate eligible. Last year, our telephone service was E-Rate eligible. to schools to obtain affordable telecommunications and access to the Internet. So, how does Marshalltown leverage E-Rate? We have a fiber lease connection between our buildings, which we receive E-Rate funding for. Our Internet service provider is also E-Rate eligible. Last year, our telephone service was E-Rate eligible. This current funding year, 2018, telephone and long-distance services will no longer be E-Rate eligible. Other products we've purchased are WAPs, universal power supply switches, and firewalls. This year, we'd like to purchase approximately three hundred and fifteen wireless access points to expand wireless coverage. Linehan Elementary Schools, also a couple spots at the high school, and Miller as well. Last year, if you recall, we had a request in for a firewall. That request has yet been to be approved. USAC has been kind of delayed in processing some of these requests, so the recommendation of Pam Jacobs at the State of Iowa, the E-Rate specialist, is recommending to refile again. Part of the need for new firewall, the firewall sits in between our internal network and the Internet. It's kind of the bottleneck of the system, as we're trying to meet the E-Rate modernization order of providing one gigabit per second for every thousand users on our network. That piece of hardware is pretty critical, you know, every, all the traffic flows through that. So, it's important we get that updated. Our current contract with Iowa Communications Network is expiring July first, 2018, so the request is to publish an RFP looking for new Internet service providers. Iowa Communications Network, there hasn't been anything wrong with their service, I think they've done a fine job providing Internet access for the district. It's just the formal process of E-Rate that we have to publish an RFP, so we'll see what kind of bids we get back. And then also, for our fiber services, we're still under part of our tenure agreement, so we would be filing for E-Rate again this year for Windstream and our fiber.
Those three hundred and fifteen access points, is that adding three hundred and fifteen more, or is that replacing three hundred and fifteen?
Partially, it's replacing, updating with newer access points, some of the other ones are getting old, so, and there are spots where we're gonna be adding coverage, we've found that in certain places of the building, teachers aren't able to get access in hallways and things like that, so it's not a addition, it's swapping out, so.
Josh, what about the addition in the gymnasium? Is that gonna cover, let's cover that?
That, I think, was on our last E-Rate purchase, so we have those, but I'd have to double-check on that, that's something that is definitely in the cards, so I'd have to get back to you on the specifics on that one.
Do you have a system where if you know the password, like in this room, and I can take my Chromebook to Franklin, and it'll log in with the same password and the same SSID name and all that kind of stuff, or is it totally different across all of the buildings?
No, it's the same system for devices owned by the district, so we do have one common SSID that's installed and put on all the devices. If you had a district-owned laptop like that machine, you shut it down, you bring it over to Franklin, you open it up, you should be good to go. The guest system that's broadcast in certain areas of the district, that's not broadcast at the high schools because students were kind of hopping on that and getting into a little bit of trouble, but that might be the only, only SSID that isn't unique across the district that we have.
Is there a guest one, like in the roundhouse?
There is, there's a guest one here, MCSD Guest, so there's a password that's published on a lot of the walls in conference rooms. It's the district's main telephone number, you log in, you enter in your email address, you click accept, and then you get access to the Internet. You might be prevented from accessing that on your Chromebook, they might not let you switch that SSID on there, so. Here's the estimated costs of what some of those requests might look like, what the retail cost would be versus our E-Rate discount. The Internet service provider I have highlighted, currently, we're paying about a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year, part of the RFP that we're publishing, we're gonna ask for different speeds and various length year of contracts. Like I said before, we're at one gigabit per second here at the district. We're capping, well, it depends on the time of the year, but we're at about an eighty percent utilization of that pipe. That's sufficient for this year, but as we start adding more devices, that's something we want to make sure we're not lagging behind and causing a slowdown on the network. So, looking at options for possibly two gigabits per second service, and we'll report back on that to kind of find the sweet spot of price versus speed.
So, how many devices do you have?
Oh, boy. That's a good question.
Four or five thousand devices, don't you?
Oh, that's just in, just in Chromebooks. I think we have about five thousand Chromebooks in the district, there's, we call them carts on wheels, cows at the high school, those are thirty laptops, six of those, there's, there's an awful lot of wireless devices.
Few thousand phones that you don't even-
Few thousand phones that are connecting to that guest wireless network, so.
And so, if there, if the, if the government's goal is one gigabit per every thousand devices, you know, you could simply say we need five gigabits.
We could, yeah. So, that's the goal, I mean, from my time here at Marshalltown, the only time I've seen a notice, a noticeable slowdown in Internet access is March Madness time, when people start streaming the basketball game, so overall, we're, we're doing pretty good.
It's probably for a math class or something.
I'm sure, yeah, statistics and, yeah, right.
Survey.
So, there's pretty significant savings by going through E-Rate for all these services, so what I'm asking for is the approval to publish some RFPs for Internet service provider wireless access points and a firewall, well, two redundant firewalls to be technically correct, and those will be published in accordance with USAC on their website, we have to do that to get E-Rate funding, and as well as the Marshalltown webpage.
My, my only question before we do that, though, would be, if you're gonna add three hundred and fifteen access points, replacing some, adding more, is the question of the addition of the roundhouse? That's in your number?
I will make sure that that is in our numbers. Do you want verification on that before we vote on this, or?
If you say it's covered-
Just a public of an hour.
I trust you.
All right, it'll be covered.
The firewall was the thing that we didn't get approved last year?
Correct.
Is there any concern about that? I mean, presumably, you needed a firewall last year.
Well, actually, it was planning ahead, so we didn't technically need it. Now, now the water's starting to get a little hot right now, if we don't get it this year, yeah, then I'd start to be pretty concerned. Yeah, it's a cause for concern that we didn't get funding for that.
Okay. Move for approval? The RFP request, request to do an RFP?
Okay. Do you have a second?
Sure, a second.
Fletcher Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Moving on to board policies. Five oh two two R is now five oh two eight R. It is a new policy. This was presented at the last meeting. Are there any questions? Could I have a motion to approve five oh two eight R?
So moved.
Second. Heitman Harris, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven zero. It doesn't exist. Five oh two point three, which is now five oh two point nine, is also changed from previous with the addition of a line, the change of title, and the references as being renumbered. Could I have a motion to approve as amended and waive the second reading, and waive the second reading for that first one, too?
So moved.
Second.
Miller Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven zero. And now, we're to you, Dr. Schutte.
I'm gonna jump first to five oh two four, which is a new policy that we're adopting as the policy for student complaints and grievances from IASB. That's strictly out of IASB, and I consulted with our attorney-in-law on the appropriate number of days there.
Could I have a motion to accept, to adopt, and to waive the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Carter Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven zero.
I'll remind you from the last meeting that we kind of deconstructed the, some former policies, a former policy on student conduct or behavior, and then broke it into policy and regulations, so what, the student conduct policy, which is five oh three point one, is as presented at the last meeting. It's a combination of what we had in policy as well as some stuff that IASB recommended there.
Do you have a motion to amend as presented and waive the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Was that a Heitman? It was a Hernandez and Harris. Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven zero.
Five oh three point one R one, regulation for student conduct referencing disciplinary procedures and/or penalties. There were two minor changes made on this one from, no, I take that back, let's see here. Yeah, two minor changes from the last time that you saw this. On the first page, we struck through the line, it's within the discretion of the person in charge of the classroom to remove the student. The administrators have worked really hard through the PBIS system to develop both matrices on what's minor and major infractions, and then also to work with the teachers on appropriate classroom interventions prior to removing a student from the classroom, and they thought by leaving that line in, which IASB had, it might kind of set them back in the work that they've done to delineate that. And then, the other thing that we changed on detention number four, it stated, you know, detention is generally before, after school, and then we added, and add other times determined by the teacher and administrator because they do use recess at times, or lunchtime recess, or other times that are non-academic sometimes to do detention consequence, so those were the two changes to that.
A motion to amend and waive the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Carter Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven zero.
Five oh three point one R two on student suspension was a combination of what had already existed in our former policy, as well as adding IASB language around suspensions, or different types of suspensions.
So, this one is an adoption, right?
Yeah, it's a, it is an adoption.
I have a motion to adopt five oh three one R two, student suspension, and waive the second reading.
So moved.
Second. Heitman Harris, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven zero.
Five oh two point eight was our former policy on student expulsion. We're recommending striking that old policy and adopting IASB's language, which will be number five oh three point two. So, we're adopting a new policy and removing the old policy.
Can I have a motion to delete five oh three two and adopt five oh three two R?
So moved.
Wait.
Hold on.
No, five oh two point eight was the old.
Delete five oh two point eight and adopt five oh three point two.
So moved.
Second.
Fletcher Carter, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried.
Time.
And a regulation on student expulsion, five oh three point two R.
That's the new number, right?
That's the new one.
Five oh two point eight R, I think.
Yeah, the former number was five oh two point eight R, we're simply changing the number to five oh three point two R.
Just change the number.
And then-
Wait, do you have a motion?
No.
No.
And then, three oh seven was a new policy that's coming back to you, this was an IASB policy, it's also one that gets cross-referenced in some of our other policies on communication channels.
I have a motion to adopt and waive the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Harris Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven zero. Hallelujah, we're moving on now, boy, oh, boy.
Did we get yours? Do you still have yours, don't you?
Yeah, we have to do mine now. All right. Five oh two point five R, changing the number to five oh two point one R. I don't think there were any changes in there. I had a couple little notes that maybe we should change. Under prohibited apparel, it's all referenced below, so it's gonna suggest that we take out gang-related and other apparel and just say any apparel worn at school that draws attention away from school's learning, because everything is referenced underneath, and then I wonder, Dr. Schutte, if we should say when in the judgment of a principal should be struck and just principal or administrator should be added to that?
Yeah, it's building administrators that would be enforcing those.
Okay, so that's fine, then. And then-
Let me ask a question back on your gang-related and other apparel. How are you changing that?
Just saying any, any instead of gang-related. Because it says gang-related up here, and then it referenced all the different types below, including gang-
So you're saying any apparel worn in school that draws attention-
Dishing away from, and then it's listed down below.
So is that, that'll need to come back. You guys will change the wording.
I don't think there's any other changes in there.
So do you have that for the next?
I'll have her give that to me. I think we already had our attorney review this, so I'll want him to review any other proposed changes.
Okay.
It's a new, let's see, it's the new number on that one. 502.6, is that a new policy?
Oh, it's just going to be a new number, isn't it?
Yeah, just-
New number.
It'll need to come back as well because you have a deletion in it.
And then 502.7.
Matt, I think the, I'm assuming you made the recommendation on that change. This would have been originally drafted by our attorney since IASB doesn't have this policy. Sure was in response to a situation or whatever. So this or any other changes we would make, we'd have our attorney review also.
That's 502.6.
Yeah, the old number, yeah.
And then 502.7. This one's- This one is, we're going to adopt the IASB policy, change the number to 503.4. And that'll be, that's kind of the boiler point then for this one, which will become 503.4R1. There's a few changes on here, just language changes.
Yeah, and those were all made by our attorney.
And then-
So that'll need to come back.
And 503.4R2 is simply a number change. It was 502.7.
2.7R, yeah.
There are no proposed changes on that other than the number.
So change that number.
That's chart, so that's it.
I've got a couple initial review policies. For initial review, we've got 401.1R on credit cards. I worked with Brian on this and now we're making some adjustments relative to desired future practice, particularly as it relates to just simply allowing those administrators that have a credit card to hold on to that credit card versus having to check it out through the business office. So much of this stuff is done on the Internet anyway. They just, you know, would have the numbers whether they have the card or not anyway. They're-
So 40110R, credit cards is coming back.
Right. And then we would like to replace 401.7 and, let's see, 401.11, the old policy is on employee travel compensation. Both of, I'm sorry. 401.7 was called travel. 401.11 was travel allowance. We would like to combine those two into a new 401.7, which you have before you. And this language is much more informative and it was taken from IASB. And then we introduced our own language as it related to, for mileage reimbursements, we currently use the current IRS rate, so we've interjected that. And then we've made a slight adjustment on meal reimbursements. I think breakfast went from 8 to 10, lunch went from 10 to 15, and I think dinner went from 15 to 20 based on today's cost. And still trying to find a middle ground with those reimbursements. So those were the changes there, but that was-
So we are replacing 401.7, 401.11 with a new 401.7 IASB.
Correct.
So the new 401.7 will need to come back. Okay.
Behind this one, 503.4. Good contact, Drew. I don't have anything down.
No, we already changed that one.
Mr. Potter, any communications of note?
Nothing tonight. Totally going to rock that server.
Okey-dokey.
I'm going to Miller-proof it.
You just call him, he's available whenever you need him. Please remember our board work session on the 22nd at 5:00 in the conference room. Question marks?
Yes.
Our next regular board meeting is February 5th. We will have a Rogers School presentation, and we will be doing our first negotiations, closed session after that board meeting. Right, Mr. Anthony?
Work session, you said.
No, it'll be in a closed session, negotiations.
Oh, but it's a, is it an actual negotiations or negotiations work?
Negotiations work.
Yeah.
Yes.
Planning.
Okay.
That helps.
Any of those. And we have another Purb meeting coming up. Has it been scheduled yet? But it will be very soon, one of the working on days, which is proving to be all more difficult. Okay, I don't see any committees that have met since our last. Karina has two board policies for the February 5th board meeting. And I would encourage you to visit with Dr. Shute or a board member to find out how to go about that. What have we done this evening to improve education for the students in our district?
Improved the new course schedule for the high school. Added some nice classes.
Some you'd like to take, Jeremiah?
You bet.
Liked what I heard about the career planning.
Yeah.
Career college planning. Sounds like good stuff. Sounds right in line with the district's goals that Dr. Shute's put forward.
Started the process for buying a whole bunch of new wireless access points.
We sure did.
There is encouraging data in terms of our preschool students, both in participation as well as growth and proficiency.
See, you guys, I was going to go until you got to the preschool stuff, too, because you mentioned all the high school stuff. Mike waiting.
Career planning is pre-K, pre-K-12.
Yeah, okay. I chose a New Year's quote for tonight, even though yesterday was Martin Luther King Day. But looking for something out of the ordinary, I did find something out of the ordinary from Neil Gaiman. He's an award-winning English author who writes short fiction works and films. And let me share it. "I hope that in this year to come, you make mistakes. Because if you're making mistakes, then you're making new things, trying new things, learning, living, pushing yourself, changing yourself, changing your world. You're doing things you've never done before, and more importantly, you're doing something. So I wish all of you mistakes."
Thanks.
Won't have a problem with that.
No problem. May I have a motion to move into, no, let's take a break first. And then we'll come back and move into, um, just a quick five-minute break.